All right. I will recall to the technical continuation of the January twenty first meeting. Today is February third, twenty twenty five. As I said, continuation of the January twenty one meeting that was recessed due to weather. We do have a quorum, though I don't think it makes any difference if there's nothing on the agenda to vote on. We are going to move straight down to our training in the business.
Good evening. So in your packet, there is some notes and we're going to go over some of what you all as a planning board do. There is an exercise that is in there we will not be doing tonight. We may pick up where that this leaves off next time. But I do wanna, as this, I was not originally gonna give this presentation, but here I am anyway. And as everybody doesn't know me, I'm really a planning director. I do wanna thank you all for being here and I wanna thank you for your service to the town. You are providing some of your time to help plan for the town. Now, you've all, planning board, is to advise the town board. So you're giving an advisory opinion, you're also acting in an advisory capacity. It's on the community's future. I think one of the main things that is a little bit hard to understand about planning unless you've been doing it for a little while is that it is an act, it's, it's, planning is actually a verb and we are growing in an orderly way. That's what we're actually trying to do here is grow the community in an orderly way. So if you're not here to grow the community, then you may be in the wrong place. But everybody certainly needs a place at the table. We do need strong and thoughtful members, which I believe we have surrounded ourselves with. And of course, you would be bringing your personal, definitely be bringing your personal experience, your professional knowledge and your passion for the community to your work as a planning board member. But it's imperative that you approach the work with a community focus perspective. Obviously, in this role, we are addressing many large issues and we're balancing many competing interests, which is individual benefits and community impacts, neighborhood preferences and broader necessities, property value increases and housing affordability, short-term gain and long-term resilience, infrastructure capacity and the desire for development. You all should be able to buffer the influences of politics and the decision-making process and offer rational analysis to the everyday business of building your community. I think I've said this to you all, some of you maybe less than one time, others I've been saying for all the time I've been here. The work that we do here will outlive my time here and the things, the decisions that we help our board make will outlive the time of many of the people here. But basically, we're trying to lay the groundwork for orderly growth. Political pressure is an inescapable part of the public deliberation. Planning board must strive to advocate for the good of the community at large rather than specific groups or individuals. As I believe you all may be aware, certainly those of you who attended PBO one oh one or have familiarity with this, I'm gonna say that the planning board's advisory role, particularly when you're advising on the comprehensive and land use planning, is defined in North Carolina General Statute one sixty D three oh one. It says the planning boards are authorized to prepare, review, maintain, monitor and periodically update and recommend to the governing board a comprehensive plan, which we're gonna talk about in a minute, and any other such plans as deemed appropriate and conduct ongoing related research, data collection, mapping and analysis. So certainly, any initial zoning of the town, a planning board recommended proposed zoning regulation. Governing board may not hold hearings or take action on initial zoning ordinance for planning until the planning board has provided written recommendation regarding the adoption. Now, as I said, largely what you all take a look at is text amendments and rezonings and then, of course, any policy changes that we're recommending. Again, the decisions that you all send up are advisory in nature. Certainly, in the case of rezoning and actions like that, once you all have the project in front of you, if you do not render a decision within thirty days, the board is able to act on items after that. Your information is advisory, they're not required to take your input into consideration, but they certainly do. So proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, text amendments or rezonings, which are actually map amendments, must be submitted to the planning board for review and comment. When the planning board reviews proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance or to the map itself, planning board shall advise and comment on whether proposed action is consistent with this plan. And not just any map in this plan, but certainly the future land use map, which is also included on our website. And we're gonna be giving you all staff reports that put a little bit more emphasis on putting that particular plan in front of you and having you actually look at how it relates to the proposal. I'm gonna read through here because I'm gonna confess I didn't have it in front of me when I got started talking. Okay, but it's, it's actually one that's found on page twenty five of the land use map, which is not in your packet. I'm simply telling you, when you go online, GIS has it and this is actually the land use map, which is supposed to be taken into consideration. Now, let's see. This has been adopted and/or any other officially adopted plan that's applicable. And we're gonna talk about adopted, applicable plans a little bit tonight in our very, very brief training exercise. I'm gonna say that probably your next meeting, we will have an exercise and there may be additional training, but I'm gonna certainly say that I hope you all get a lot out of this. The planning board may also review and comment on other matters as deemed appropriate by the planning board. Additional planning duties, in addition to the above duties, general statutes, a grant planning board's broad authority for planning and plan implementation is outlined in Gemma Fech's one sixty D three oh one B. Local government may assign the planning board the following powers and duties. Prepare, review, maintain, monitor and periodically update and recommend to the governing board a comprehensive plan. This plan, by the way, is supposed to be updated on a five-year interval. So it is a living document, it is subject to changes. Other such plans as deemed appropriate conduct ongoing related research, data collection, mapping and analysis. Facilitate and coordinate citizen engagement and participation in the planning process. Part of the way that you do that is certainly listening to the comments. It's not a back and forth when people come in with a comment, it's simply taking their input into consideration and using it to help shape your opinions. You could be asked to develop and recommend policies, ordinances, developing regulations, administrative procedures, other means for carrying out plans and coordinate in an efficient manner. You could be chosen to advise the government board, governing board concerning implementation of the plans, including but not limited to review and comment on all zoning text and map amendments as required by one sixty D six oh four. To exercise the functions of administration and enforcement of various needs, carrying out plans that the governing board may direct and perform any other related duties. Now, some jurisdictions grant, elect to grant all the above powers to planning boards while others do not. Now, as you all undoubtedly know, when you look at our zoning ordinance or you look at our land use plan, the area that we cover is our municipal area and our ETJ area. We do have a land use plan, which I've just pointed out to you all. We have comprehensive and strategic plans, starting with that one. There's a comprehensive transportation plan that was adopted in two thousand and eleven that's currently being updated. There's a bike and pedestrian plan from two thousand and twenty, this is on page five of the book. There's also Parks and Rec master sys, I mean, system master plan from two thousand and eighteen. There's a downtown vision plan for two thousand and fourteen that's currently being redone. There is the code of ordinances, which is online. There's also freestanding ordinances such as the sedimentation erosion control ordinance, which is a Chatham County, two thousand and fifteen. And then there is the actual unified development ordinance, which is this thing, which also is available on our website as PDF. It has zones, subdivisions, flood drainage prevention, stormwater management and riparian buffer regulations. So at any time you all have any questions tonight, even though it's like I'm sort of rushing through this, let's just see where we go and what we need. There are types of development decisions, legislative decisions, which is the choice of what action to take or whether or not to take any action at all, is at the discretion and the good judgment of the town board. In advance of the decision, the matter must be referred to the planning board for recommendation. And that's that recommendation we've been talking about. Advisory decisions are made by boards that may recommend decisions on a matter but do not have final decision-making authority over it. That would be your board. A common example is the advice on a rezoning, requests given by the planning boards to the town board commissioners. So your advice could be, we should do this because it matches these plans. Or we really are recommending against this because there's some things about it that don't match the ordinance or do not match the future land use plan. And we've had at least one experience of that in recent months, I believe, one or more. Certainly, all the excitement about the womble and the bland rezoning would fall into the category of a combination of meeting the adopted ordinances and meeting the land use plan and meeting the desire of the builder or developer. Quanti judicial decisions, there are evidentiary hearings that are conducted in court-like matter. They would be based on evidence in the record and standards as required by the ordinance. These actually take place at the town board level and they would perhaps be acting at the board of adjustment. And then administrative decisions, which are made typically by professional staff in government departments. So like you all in some ways, or maybe not like you at all in any way, basically, when someone turns in an application to us, these books and the rules that we have in place are actually what guides our decisions, not personal taste. Day-to-day non-discretionary matters related to implementation of the ordinance, including issuing permits, interpreting the ordinances and enforcing them. And so in this particular equation, there are actually four sorts of groups that are involved. And again, I think I may have covered some of this, we're just gonna go there anyway. So the town board of commissioners adopts ordinances, texts amendments, policies, budgets, makes appointments to advisory boards, serves as the board of adjustment for special use permits and provides preliminary approval for preliminary plaits, or final plaits you're done at the staff level, as are our site plan approvals. Planning board sponsors planning studies, recommends policies, advises town board of use text amendments, map amendments to determine consistency with comprehensive plan, reviews preliminary plaits. And then board of adjustment just does hearings and those hearings are on appeals and on variances. So it's, the appeal in this case is an appeal of a decision made by staff. If we turn down an application or occasionally we approve an application and someone has an objection to it, or if someone can't get a permit, then they go to the board of adjustment. The deal with the board of adjustment is, in addition to operating like court, their decisions are only reviewed by superior court. So they do not go to board of commissioners. It's board of adjustment and then the court system and off you go. So those involve an awful lot of roles. We have at least one of those decisions pending at some point in the not-too-distant future. And certainly, a board of commissioners may be doing special use permit or two this year. Okay, planning staff issues permits, conducts technical studies, initiates zoning enforcement, advises the town, we also write the text of ordinances. And probably one of the most important functions of you all, in addition to reviewing the application in front of you all, is approving a generally staff-written consistency statement. For the planning board, your decisions have to be consistent with this plan. They do not have to be reasonable in the public interest, we'll get to that in a minute. But your decisions are tied to this book. So when you have an objection, you know, it's probably best to couch it in, the land use plan says X and this says Y, or I don't like this because it doesn't match the plan. And even if you do like it, but it doesn't match the plan, or you do like it, but it doesn't match the plan, whether it matches or it doesn't match, you definitely need a way to help. Now, I wanna point out that every last one of your meetings is actually covered under the open meetings law, which gives us a couple of things. Number one, we cannot conduct a meeting without quorum, okay, which is half plus one. You, basically, public decisions have to be made in a formal environment with adequate public notification and all discussions out in the open. And a majority of the board gathering and deliberating public business is a meeting subject to the open meetings law, which requires all to be open to all and notice to be provided to the public in time and place. This is another area where there's sort of a little boomerang that can get you into an amazing amount of trouble if you should happen to decide to email each other in a group and then share information amongst yourselves. You can't do that because it is the same as an, it's the same as a meeting, it's not open to the public. One of the practices that was pretty common when I first got into this field, which was twenty years ago, was I worked in at least one or more places where our planning board and our board of adjustment liked to get in a fifteen passenger van and we're all over to a site and discuss the pros and cons of a case. Well, the problem with that is we were having a public meeting, it just wasn't public, we were very much having a meeting. And so the county attorney in that case sat us all down and said, you can't do that anymore. So you have to make sure that you don't have quorum and that sort of thing. Anyway, any meeting that happens to happen here or happens to happen in the place where we used to meet, which is where the board of commissioners still meets, which is the Act Center, can maybe broadcast, anyone may be allowed to photograph, film or record anything that happens in a public meeting. So if you see someone sitting on one of these chairs and they are just videoing, reflecting, heck out of what you're doing, they're allowed to do so under state law. They can also take your picture and they can certainly carry materials out with them. So, you know, we have a lot of things to remember in that. Conflict of interest, which comes up a lot, is where the outcome of a matter being considered as reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, readily identifiable financial impact on a board member. So let's say you live, I don't know, in Powell Place and the matter in front of you is about some property that's directly beside you and the value of your property might go up or go down in response to the item that we're discussing. You may wish to reveal to your board that you should not vote on a recommendation regarding a zoning map or a text amendment where the situation exists. The board ultimately decides whether or not you have a direct financial interest, okay? So if Charity lives next to me, she's coming for a map amendment, it's going to devalue my property and I'm sitting on your board, I don't need to vote on that particular item. Excuse me just one second while I send someone a message, let's see, there we go. Okay, I hate the telephone, but at least it's stopped. So certainly, if you're in doubt, you declare your potential conflict, we openly discuss openly with the board and then your board members vote on whether or not you should vote. But in a lot of cases, it's super clear-cut. You live in a place that is directly affected by this. This involves a school that your child goes to, these would be things, but you have to have a financial interest. Let's say you work there. You know, everybody has a job, everybody has things to do outside. So certainly, conflict of interest comes up a lot, let's see, all right. Working effectively as a board, we like to stress this right here. So part of what happens here is we do prepare an agenda for you, but if you all want to change your agenda, you wanna do something differently, you need to have a clear agenda. It has to be prepared ahead. If you yourself know about a project that's coming up and you yourself wanna conduct a personal site visit to go look at it, you should. You can certainly ask questions when you're in here. And there's several of you who've asked a lot of very, very pressing questions about a lot of matters that have been very helpful to us as staff. And so don't stop asking questions, ask more questions. We do have a formal procedure. We are gathering information from citizens at a lot of these meetings. You should save time for deliberation and feedback, discuss and explain your decisions. Certainly, in the case of the two recent rezonings, pretty sure that you all may have noticed that when the decision was split instead of unanimous, we needed to hear from the folks who were voting opposed to it. We also need to hear from the members that were voting for it because part of the feedback that the board of commissioners wanted, I mean, they can watch a one-hour meeting and they can kind of try to leaf read the tea leaves or you can just come right out and say, I don't like this proposal and this is why, okay? I don't like it, I think it's going to impact the neighborhood in a negative way. I feel like, or I love this project, I love all sorts of things happening near me in the ETJ. So you're certainly free to do that too. You should discuss other issues right, other than rezoning and subdivisions, long-range planning, future developments. And actually, for your next meeting, there's actually going to be a couple more information items. Realize that in some ways, you all may feel that it's questionable use of your time occasionally. But the particular piece that I'm going to present to you all in your packet appeared in a news publication recently and it is about the amount of money that a family of four would need to be able to earn to live in this community. And there is a calculator to give you different parts of the state and different communities to give you an idea. There's also variables such as how many people are in your family and what are the age groups of the people in your family. I'm gonna let you in on a deep secret, it's a hundred and eleven thousand dollars a year per household. So I just wanna be sure that you all have the newest information. Certainly, I've given you all some training on how to buy a house. I certainly stood and sat in this role, this is my twenty-first year in this particular type of role, not here in this town, but in this field, having had a whole different career, but with something entirely different. It's quite boring, but no one wants to hear about. But let me just say this, when, when I joined this particular field, I began being pressured early on to tell people about the wonders of homeownership. But over the twenty, twenty-one years that I've spent in this particular field, I've begun to see that it, that there's an awful lot more to the situation. And there are people who need to be homeowners and there are people who really maybe aren't cut out for it or have some sort of reason why they don't want to be. But every community needs to have something that makes it possible for everyone who chooses to live there, to be able to live there. Now, on the topic of resolving disputes among yourselves as a board, we have an open form of government that encourages the free exchange of ideas about what people want from the government. Obviously, people do not always agree on what they want the government to do. So whether you have disagreements from the public or within your own planning board, conflicts are inevitable. Encourage public input and strive toward consensus. That does not mean bring me a unanimous decision every time. What I'm expecting you all to do is think and then express. So if you don't agree as an entire group on a, on a subject, we need to hear about it because an awful lot of items that come in front of you all are supposed to be being workshopped. When it gets to the board of commissioners, they're done workshopping. The project is either ready or it's not ready, it's either to be approved or it's not to be approved. But you guys are in a place where we can workshop projects and we can also send things back or we can ask people to improve a project significantly. If someone comes in with a rezoning or a map amendment or a text amendment and their proposal does not work out particularly and they are going to make a substantial change, don't be at all surprised if you come in one night for a rerun where we're going to literally rerun the discussion from last time and do this change significantly. It'll be back in front of you. What I do not want to do is take a proposal or recommendation from you all, go into the workshop with the developer, change it ninety-eight percent from what came in front of us last time and then take it to the board of commissioners with your recommendation on what you saw last time. What I bring up or what Teresa or what anyone from my staff brings up from you all should be your evaluation of the project as I'm going to present it or they're gonna present it to board commissioners. Did y'all see that? Okay, just wanna make sure we have them there. All right. On the topic of rezonings, let me just say this, there's an awful lot of rules. They take a surprising amount of time to describe. But the advisability of amendment to the official zoning map, which by the way, that thing that's on GIS that shows how your property's owned, that's the official zoning map. It's electronic these days, it's not so much paper. I think back in my day when it first started, we were doing it with a quill on sheet skin, but we've actually moved up a little bit, we're not even, we're not even drilling it into the cave walls anymore. We're trying to be a little bit more modern. But when you wanna change the official zoning map, it's a matter that's committed to the legislative discretion of the town board of commissioners and is not controlled by any one factor. In deciding whether to adopt or disapprove a zoning map amendment, the town board of commissioners may consider many factors. They're not limited to this list, we're gonna go over. But we are trying to, it's not limited to whether and the extent to which each proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan, but that's a biggie, I wanna be super clear with you. You guys, well, maybe not all of you guys, some of you folks worked on the comprehensive plan. You'll certainly, if you're still here a year or two down the road, you will definitely be working on this one. When we update it, you'll be in front and center. So this comprehensive plan, part of the ownership and part of what makes this plan a joyous experience is if you all have buy-in and you work very hard on it and you certainly intend to defend it when someone comes in and wants to do something that violates it. Or it isn't, combined, or maybe it is. The land use plan itself, comprehensive transportation plan, which we described by school and ed plan, downtown vision plan, parks and rec master plan, all of those are featured. And the staff report will tell you which pieces we took into consideration when we made a staff recommendation. And what you're going to see over the next several months, or as long as you're on the board, however long that is, what you're going to see is that staff is less plugged into the idea of making a recommendation. You were more plugged into the idea of getting a recommendation from you. I'm telling you how to think, I'm trying to find out what you think. Let's see, you need to find out if it's consistent with any provision in the UDO currently. Now, if you're amending the UDO, not being consistent with this is a good idea, that's why we're amending it. So anything that we're amending, the consistency with that. Also with the code of ordinances, code of ordinances is laws like dogs barking and throwing trash into the street and anything that isn't covered, unified development ordinances about land use, other things are just noise and traffic and jaywalking and, you know, so like. So that's in the code of ordinances. Is required by changed conditions, because honestly, if no conditions have changed, we've had a law in place for five years that was working great, probably one of you guys' first question should be, why do we not have changed this? Okay, addresses a demonstrated community need, give you a great example, give you a great example. So I've worked in a couple of places where there was a prohibition against gas stations in one particular district. But you find that office development is happening in a place and none of the standard services that you associate with building a community are in that area. So a demonstrated community need would be the need for convenience store. Or if you have a food desert situation where someone is five or more miles from food line and you need a grocery store that's more of a neighborhood or addresses a neighborhood issue. Or there's not enough restaurants, or all the restaurants are a particular crowd. You roll up and you talk into a clown's face instead of you go sit down at the actual table, we could have a family meal. Or it could be there's too many family meal places and it's not in places with a drive-through. So that would be a changed community need. Also, I'm gonna say banks, doctors' offices, we had a, one place that I worked, it needed a dialysis center. It was sort of a comprehensive community issue that maybe wouldn't occur to a lot of you. But that particular county had a forty-five percent morbid obesity rate. And so when you started talking to doctors, even down to pediatricians, they were talking to you about type one and type two diabetes. Well, type one and most particularly type two diabetes goes hands in, hand in hand with kidney dialysis. So you probably may not be sitting around one afternoon, you know, with some friends having a drink at, at habit and think, gosh, we need a dialysis center here. But if twenty-five percent of the people that you know have an obesity problem and have developed diabetes as a, as a part of it, what I'm hearing is two things, number one, I need more exercise, I need more exercise opportunities and also, number two, I may need some specialty clinics that we don't have. So please keep your mind open to changing needs of your community. We are growing and part of growing is that painful part where you don't have the things that you need and you need to get them. There are some things that do come with a certain number of rooftops and then there's other things that rely on citizen demand. Now, demanding it from us does no good, you need to talk to the people who are going to build it. But surely, my goodness, aware that we're certainly eager to get it, it's a good thing. Is it compatible with existing and proposed uses surrounding the subject land? A great example, okay, great example, it would be, again, we had, over here, not too far from here, It would be, again, we had over here, not too far from here, we had a car wash that stayed open for an awful long time at night. They had a food truck over there with a very loud VA system involving music. If someone were to come in to get a permit to do something like that, the question is how loud is the music? What times the music? How much traffic does it generate? How does it impact people? How much piece of fire are people getting near there? These are all things you might want to be thinking about. So you're going to have to think about it a little bit more holistically than just, should there be a target here or should there be a grocery store here? Or would it be cool if there was a place to do bow and arrow hunting here? Or target practice? Sorry, I'm sorry before you start hunting with that. But anyway, what I'm driving at is you need to be thinking about how it impacts the neighboring community. Let's see, is it consistent with the adjacent zoning districts? Again, you don't want to have any industrial next to three residential communities. You, you know, some appliance shows up in your neighborhood, maybe not your favorite day in your life. Would it result in logical and orderly development pattern? Again, if you start thinking about, as you're heading out to areas where the development is starting to seriously ratchet up, the area over by the ag center where Reeds Farm is just starting their initial development, maybe some of the things that they didn't think of would be something someone brings forward, logical and orderly development. If you imagine yourself in an A place and you start thinking about rings of one mile, two miles, five miles, 10 miles, how far am I driving away from or walking or riding a bicycle from where I am to get 10 of my needs met all weekend? So that is logical and orderly development. Maybe not something else that I might think about, but it's sad to be in planning because that's what people like me think about all the time. Okay. Would result in development that is adequately served by public facilities, which means streets, potable water, sewage, stormwater management, solid waste collection, disposal, schools, park, police, fire, emergencies, and medical facilities? I think we've actually discussed nearly every last one of these things in our last five or six resignings. Not in that other, not in that ETJ. I'm only, I'm only picking because it's fun, but you know what I mean. Oh, even so, if that community works, you come out there, then the next question is where do I shop? Where do I get my food? What, what neighborhood service is joining me? If I need my dog room, where's that happening? If I have a dog, where's my dog walking? Where am I running? Where's my recreation in this area? And these are questions that you all can certainly ask developers when they stand out there with me. You know, this is not a fashion show that consists of me and attorney trying to be the coolest dressed guy in the room. This is really about me getting the town side of the situation and you all picking out of them the pieces where you're trying to figure out if this is going to be adequately served by the facilities that we have or what they're doing to add facilities that we need. If you have a new neighborhood or a new school going somewhere and there's a really difficult time with fire flow for the water pressure out in that area, well, we hope there's never a fire, but the night of the fire is not a good time to test the water pressure. So adequacy of that. And then would it result in serious or significant adverse impacts on the natural environment? Not limited to water, air, smile please, you know exactly what I'm talking about, noise, wildlife, vegetation, that ones in the natural functioning of the environment. If you're interrupting a nature preserve, is it actually worth it? Would it adversely affect property values in the area? Either tugging them up so, because we're going to talk for a second about gentrification, but employers down is always a bad thing. But imagine you were the highest dollar house on the street and then suddenly something comes in next door and they're all 1.1 to 1.8. Your tax value could go up. So the impact on your community and the affordability of the structures in your community could be impacted by that. When I bought, I've told this story so many times, I know y'all are sick of hearing, but I'm going to tell you one more time because I'm standing up here. When I bought my house in 2018, it was worth one-third of what it is worth today. At that time, I could come in and put down half of my house. If my house burns down tonight, I could not move into another structure in my neighborhood because it has priced itself out of my budget in just the time from 2018 to now. If I found that my house was not a good fit, then my burning question for myself and my family members inside of my house is where do you have to live? Where can you afford to live near where I live, have the same neighborhood and the same associations and all the conveniences I'm used to? And where is that place and how do I afford that? So it is great to bring in new shiny stuff. The issue is that if it gentrifies your neighborhood to the point where you can no longer afford to live there, then you may feel quite differently about it. So think about progress and think about the future and think about orderly growth, but also think about affordability and equity and what is fair to others. Now, and that's my speech. So anyway, would it be consistent with the public interest and purposes and intent of the ordinance? Now, the consistency statement, I would love to tell you all this great story about how I sit down and I wrote this fabulous consistency statement for you and then I never use it to, as a starter kit for the one for the Board of Commissioners, but that would be a lie. So we start with the one for you guys and then we have to prepare one of, at least a working draft of one for the town board because when they adopt or reject any zoning amendment or any map amendment, the town board shall also approve a statement describing whether its action is consisted, consistent, excuse me, with this adopted official plan and all those other plans we spent this whole time talking about and briefly describing why the Board of Commissioners consider the action taken to be both reasonable and in the public interest. Now, reasonable would be that, you know, there's a precedent that goes along this line and in the public interest could be the public interest for more affordable housing. It could be ongoing to tax base. It could be bringing shopping opportunities here. It could be bringing higher quality of schools. It could be bringing alternatives for education. Let me just say there's a lot of options. Now, a statement that a proposed amendment is inconsistent with a plan does not preclude them from adopting a rezoning. And there is a weird sort of catch in the law where if the board votes for something that is inconsistent with the existing land use plan, not the words, but the map changes for that parcel or those parcels permanently as of the night of that hearing. Okay? So we work hard on the land use plan and part of staff's role is to try to figure out how it fits into the bigger plan and part of yours is to help us help figure out how it works and then make a recommendation that goes up so that the board can either act within their plan or figure out a justification for working outside of it. Now, statement approved by the town board on plan consistency is not subject to judicial review. If a case were to go under court where the question, the actions of the board were being questioned, that statement is not up for grabs. They said what they said. Plan consistency is a fact that must be explicitly considered, but it does not control the outcome of the decision. It's substantive rational planning and thought that is required to support rezoning decisions and planning provides technically competent analyses of the issues being considered and examines the long-term implications and impacts of individual land use decisions. Which is a really long drawn out way of saying, we're steering you guys in the direction. A lot of times when I'm up here, well, not here because I've never been in here before, but a lot of times when I'm standing at a podium doing this, I'm giving you two options. And I'm not telling you which one's the right option. I'm simply telling you what the two options are. And even if it appears that I'm only giving you one option, there's really two. And one is to recommend approval and the other one is to recommend denial. Now, the statement of reasonableness, which is only required for the governing board, examines the reasonableness of the proposed zoning. It shall be approved by the governing board. Statement of reasonableness may consider, among other factors, the size, physical conditions or other attributes of the area proposed to be rezoned. By the way, the larger the better. Just saying. Benefits and detriment, detriments to landowners, neighbors, and the surrounding community. Relationship between the actual current, uh, current actual and permissible development on the track and adjoining areas and the development that would be permissible under this amendment. Why the action taken is in the public interest in any changed conditions. And let me just say this. Part of zoning and certainly part of planning is figuring out the future, figuring out how things are going to come together. And an awful lot of it may look unclear when you're not looking at the completely big picture. We don't generally come in here and tell you the next 20 years of what we're thinking, but what we do tell you is why this is an integral part of it or why it's maybe not.
Great question.
Yes?
The statement of reasonableness, yeah, compared to the consistency statement, is it subject to judicial review?
It very much is. That is actually what, what makes those decisions at the state level. Yes, sir. Okay, so spot zoning. This one's a weird one, but it's a relatively small area that is zoned differently from surrounding area and it is illegal unless local government establishes a reasonable basis for the spot zone. It usually needs to be a compelling governmental interest. Give you a great example. Anybody lives in ETJ, certainly you and you. Okay. So you're in an area that is uniformly RA or RA2 or RA5 even scarier, really large lots and really wide open places and you need a fire station. If we literally went in and rezoned one two acre parcel as a fire station, the compelling governmental interest is the need for health and human safety and the ability to extinguish fires and to respond to emergency calls. Because a lot of the first responders for, you know, you're having chest pain, it's a fire truck because those people are first responders and EMTs in a lot of cases. That's everywhere you go, including where I live. It's not, it's not restricted. Initially, it started out in rural areas. It's kind of bled over to everything. Last time I saw the rescue squad, I was about 15. So let me say, it's no longer time. So you've got the size to take into consideration, benefits and detriments to landowners, neighbors, and surrounding community. Relationship between the current actual and permissible development on the track and adjoining areas and the development that would be permissible. Why the action taken is in the public interest in any change. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm on those previous, but relationship with comprehensive plan, degree of change, and then relative harm or benefit to the owners. There is a, a kind of a tricky little piece in the state constitution where you can't give exclusive privileges to somebody or leg up. You also can't punish somebody. I hate you because you have money is not a good reason to disallow something. But certainly in the case of spot zoning, let me just say that really small areas that have very few owners that only benefit a handful of people in a way that is a detriment to the whole community would be something that was actionable and was not lawful. A written recommendation should address each of the factors. It's important to take into account policies behind the original zoning and, and the informal policy of precedent being set. So where spot zoning comes up, like I said, in your case, if we did it out where you live, it would make perfect sense. If we did it for a convenience store, less so. If we did it for a, I don't know, if someone wanted to put an apartment in the building in the middle of an area that's all 10 acre lots, you know, that's spot zoning. Where we sort of dance on the edge of spot zoning is when we go and do conditional rezoning. We're going to talk about how you get out of that within that. So for general use rezoning, let, let me just sort of cut through most of the notes here and tell you how that works. Essentially, if you go to the table of uses inside of this document, which we even proved very quickly from the version that's sitting here in front of me, because I didn't bring a recent copy with me, but it's so cool. But when you go down a particular zoning category and you start looking at permitted uses on this particular table, like duplex, if you see a P, it's permitted use. If you see in our new, when a gray line or a gray, that's a, that's not allowed because you're going to ask a special use permit. But when you do a general rezoning, if somebody rezones to R10, every single place in this ordinance where you see a P, that is a use that you get to do as a use by rights. Or if it's an S, it's a use with a special use permit. So in general use rezonings, the idea there is generally uniformity and consistency with the land use plan. Let me know if I'm going too fast. So basically, you are, you are, you're reviewing it to revise the official map, change the zoning district classifications of particular parcel, a group of parcels. And in this particular case, you do it in the base zoning district. So sometimes you have a base district and then you have an overlay. The downtown is an example of an overlay where you have the base conditions and then you have something on top of it that either adds to or takes away uses within that group. But you give the person the full range of uses for that district. Okay? So an example would be if you say commercial, you literally mean every commercial use that is listed in one of these. When you go down the side, this is the potential uses and this shows whether or not it's permitted in each of the districts. Hopefully, we'll get a little bit more training on that as we go along, but let me just say that's critical. Conditional rezoning, on the other hand, provides a uniform mechanism for amending the official zoning map to establish basically a site-specific rezoning. Generally, what happens is you take a general use district that is inadequate to ensure the development allowed will conform with the town's adopted plans or appropriately address impacts. So let's say that you have a district that normally allows cement plants and you want to allow the person to do something on that list in that district, you just don't want them to have all the uses in that district. So through a conditional rezoning, you can go in and subtract out the ones that you don't want them to have or that you've agreed mutually not to do that. So conditional zoning establishes a conditional zoning district that is equivalent to general use district, subject to conditions or restrictions that the applicant and the town have mutually agreed upon that are necessary to ensure performance to adopt the plans adequately, adequately address expected development impacts. What does that mean? Okay, if I let you put that commercial business that's essentially manufacturing on this site, but I take away all of the things I don't want you to do, such as mixing cement on the site, I'm taking away the cement mixing through this agreement that we have us as the developer because something about mixing cement seems like not a good fit for the neighborhood. You all get it? Okay.
I have a question, Randy.
Ask away.
Okay, so what if they have an applicant who is wishing to conditionally rezonate some land?
Yeah.
And then they have their list and we're like, and there's two of these that we don't like. So we recommend that.
They remove those from the list?
Yeah, and then in that case, it would go to Board of Commissioners? Or would they like them have to rework and reapply?
If they want to on the fly amend that list, they can do it while they're here and your recommendation could be as presented minus these uses. If they wanted time to go back and study it, that means they're coming back to you.
Okay.
That help?
Yeah.
Okay.
With the conditional rezoning, if I correct that there's time limits sometime, some of the.
You have a limit for how much time it takes for you to, how long you can, how long this is valid before you have to act? If you don't act though, it does not revert to previous. The town, the town may elect to rezonate back to the original because you obviously were not going forward in your plan, but there's no such thing as a boom, hang, back.
That was my question. If someone else, they would sell that manufacturing business, does the town have to revert back to previous zoning for the next buyer? The next buyer come in and buy it with that condition?
Let's say the next buyer comes in and it's coming and she wants to change it. She's not going to do, let's say they were a cement plant. She's not going to do cement anymore. She's going to do something with acrylic or something. Or she wants to do some, something completely different, farmer's market. Your conditional rezoning may not apply to her. She got to apply for a completely different one. You start it. So it's site-specific.
Yeah, that's, that's site-specific zoning stays until forever.
Yeah, but if somebody wants to come in and do something different, then after you say.
Yeah.
Now, if you want to come in and do the exact same thing she was doing, you can.
Or any of the permitted uses.
That was in that little list that we whittled that. Yes, sir.
So what's the point of the, what's the point of the revert back after a certain time, let you go do something?
Well, let me give you a great example. Let's say that somebody wants to build a 10-story apartment building with 1,500 apartments in it and they get all their plans together and three and a half years from now they still don't have it. That, that approval is dead in the water until they either come back and visit you again and tell you what their real plans are or the town can just take it back. It's simply, it's not coming. I worked in a town, mm, two, three jobs ago that's been waiting for Walmart for 27 years. I was dying to tell them on, on a daily basis, they're never coming. So actually it, that's, now, things like a special use permit, they can just expire. You simply can't do whatever you got permission to do. You don't activate it within a period. So we do set time on some of those as well. Okay, so let's just keep going a little bit here. So basically, like I said, sets this up, conditional zoning affords a degree of certainty in land use. Decision's not possible in rezoning to a general category. I literally can get you to agree to cut out about your uses we don't want. Now, review standards. Advizability of conditional zoning as a matter of committed to the legislative discretion of the town board is not controlled by any one factor in deciding whether or not to adopt or disapprove conditional zoning, town board may consider review standards in section two or other appropriate factors. There can also be additional conditions. Planning board or the town board may request that reasonable and appropriate conditions be attached to approval for the rezoning. Any such condition should relate to the relationship of the proposed use to surrounding property, proposed support facilities such as parking areas and driveways. Let's say somebody decides they want an event space. You know very well they don't have enough parking on the site. They insist that there's additional parking nearby. You could make the condition that they have to identify the parking lots that are going to be their spillover and how they intend to make that work. You don't just leave up in the air an oak and pray that they work it out. Pedestrian and vehicular circulation, screening and buffer areas. I'm sure you know what we're talking about, trees and stuff, burns to keep the noise or whatever. Timing of the developed street and right-of-way improvements, water, sewer improvements, stormwater, provision of open space, other matters that the planning board and board commissioners may find appropriate and the applicant may propose. Specific additional conditions applicable to the rezoning request may be proposed by the applicant, planning board, or the town. Only those conditions mutually approved by the town and the applicant may be incorporated into the permit. The proposed condition is unacceptable to the owner, petition can be withdrawn, proposing rezoning cannot go forward. Likewise, condition is unacceptable to the town board, petition can be denied and there is no rezoning. Please know that if you do that, you can't come back for a year. And your new proposal has to be substantially different.
Does that mean to just conditional zoning?
All of it, any rezoning. Per NC General Statute 162D703B, conditions and site-specific standards shall be limited to those that address performance of development and use to town ordinances officially adopted plans and those that address impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the developments. And the final piece of this training tonight is that a request for variations in UDO standards with all relevant proportional UDO set variations or UDO standards may be approved by the town board if modifications submitted and determined to be suitable or the request that's consistent with the spirit and intent of the ordinance and ensure compatibility with land uses on surrounding properties. So essentially, this is kind of like a good native policy. Set up by the state. Any other, we're not going to do the, that tonight. We simply don't have the time, yes, ma'am?
I have some questions.
Ask away.
Okay.
I love questions.
With these comprehensive and strategic plans, how often are they updated? And is it different for each of them? Like I'm seeing the transportation plan is from 2011.
Yes.
Is that conducted by the UDOT and how often is that?
Okay, the transportation plan was about in 2011. There was a town plan created afterwards, but the county one is actually under consideration and under review right now.
Okay.
We're sitting here right now while this happens, because that is out of date, it certainly doesn't reflect. The comprehensive plan, as I told you by state law, has to be updated every five years.
And that's for all the counties?
Well, the comprehensive land use plan, the land use.
Okay.
Strategic plan, you should probably look at every two to five years and the town should really review it and amend it according to what's going on. The parks and rec plan can be done much more often.
Okay.
As we acquire more parks and there's more open space and as the needs change. I mean, 10 years ago, did you hurt a pickleball?
Yeah. Okay, and then I have another question.
Definitely.
Can we get printouts of the chart that has the approved zoning uses?
Oh, it's actually, it's in the UDO itself, it's actually the table of uses, you mean?
Yeah, I am frequently on the computer looking at it, but I think it might be helpful to have.
You're not over there?
It's hard to find it too.
No, it's actually, if you go to the table of contents, the table of uses is actually just.
I mean, UDO and general.
It's on our website.
I know, I know, I look at it. But it's the permitted uses list has changed a lot in the last.
Also then.
In response to the growth of the area, yes.
And then follow-up is, is printout, would it be updated very quickly? How often is it being changed and updated?
Our latest, our latest version is July version. We had something in there.
You do?
Yeah.
On the July?
July version. Certainly, whenever anything is actually updated, we fairly quickly.
Okay.
It's fairly quick for your time.
Sure, yeah. I understand that. I think that's, those are my questions.
But every, how often do the permitted uses change? Because I could think of three or four times.
Fairly often, fairly often.
And then are we, it seems like, do we look at those and then the four hundred day or change?
Oh, absolutely. They don't get changed until you do, because of a recommendation in one direction or the other.
So it's, but it'd be nice to have.
Well, what we actually do with the ones that are posted online, what we actually do in the case of, let's say that you come in and you're asking for something that's not specifically named there, the ordinance says that I basically find the next nearest or similar use.
They used to be like 50 pages.
Yeah.
Permanent uses, and it's now like 10 or something?
Something like that. It's supposed to be easier to use. Is it?
I don't know, what I was missing, C1 is not in there anymore?
No, it's not, no, sorry. Yeah, C2 and C4.
Yeah, but C1 still looks, I've heard of it.
We're actually about to make that particular group of amendments because that should have been changed when the UDO was adopted.
It would be office, was it last one? Office.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, the last changes.
Is it changing to C2?
Probably, it really depends, because one of the issues with the current C2 district is that it puts gas stations just about anywhere. And maybe there's places that don't really feel like a gas station. Certainly, there may have been a time when the area out in front of my office felt like you're on a highway. It's not very highway. You're driving into downtown, toward a courthouse. There aren't a lot of highways that do that. So certainly, there's been a degree of rethinking the, again, you know, things are all changing. I would like to think y'all think that's exciting, being on a board at the time of the growth and the change that's happening. Maybe not? Scary? Yeah. Well, let me just say, I was reading over the other day Carrie's original land use plan, Carrie, the town, not Carrie, my friend. And I'm going to say, although she might have written about the land use plan, the one that they had originally, but Carrie was a town plan for 1,500 people.
I lived there when it was about.
Yeah, when it was 1,500 people.
Yeah.
And I'm going to say that if you drive into Carrie today, it's almost unrecognizable. But the one thing that you will notice as you're going through particularly east Chatham Street and that area that is, looks like they wrote after shelling, what you're going to realize is that the leftover pattern from back when it really was a town roughly the size of my neighborhood, it, they didn't anticipate being 200,000 people. And every time you run into a traffic situation, oh, Fuqua is a great example. A town that you can't have ever imagined it was going to be like it is, but that challenge would make the left turn if you were going. There should be a prize.
I've got a question on.
Ask away.
On the future land use plan, the zoning is different than maybe like my house is a downtown.
Support, yes. Downtown support would be a list of, this basically, it's an idea of a list and then there's individual districts that actually match that more closely within zoning.
Did that list is available in the future use plan?
No. The future land use plan is an idea, a broad idea of what sorts of things you'd like to have happen. The zoning ordinances are actual districts where things are permitted or they're not. And so they're different. A great.
But the, I guess part of the complexity is you, you know, if, it seems ambiguous, why not? And this is just, I'm not asking, I'm asking for your philosophy on why not use current zoning for future use?
Couple of really good reasons. Let's say that the town. Well, no, I'll give you a great example of public, a really good reason. Let's say, I'm looking over here at this car wash and that sort of thing that I'm looking at across the way. Let's say for some reason we added 50,000 people in a three to five-year period. And the land uses around there were changing. The owner was to either die or age out or leave the area. It closed and it's sitting there vacant. So certainly, you know, your vision from nine years ago may not be your vision from today. I'm certainly going to say that there was a time in my life, and there may be people sitting around this table, more than one, who may have been to a video store, for an example, or a place that sold CDs. And so I can't say that standing in record bars as a 15-year-old, I was thinking an awful lot about having a telephone that had 1,500 songs on it. I could not possibly imagine paying $12 a month and having a subscription service that can let me listen to a million songs, literally. So sometimes the uses change over time and sometimes it's simply a slightly different vision. At one time, the town decided that the area where Robertson's Walk just recently got approved was going to be a heavy industrial area with manufacturing going on. And if you drive over and take a look at the woods, I don't see a lot of manufacturing going on. But we keep changing that particular piece. You need that somewhere in your plan, the question is where is it? And then when you grow, as Carrie did, sometimes you move things away to different areas. I've certainly lived in an awful lot of places. I've lived all over the state, I'll try, and it's maybe something we haven't talked about. I've lived all over the state and I'm going to say that I've lived in a lot of places that were in transition. I've worked in a great number of places that were in a transition. The purpose of the land use plan is not to set up the zoning, it's to support the zoning. So describing something as downtown support is explaining that you've moved out of the village center and you're going out here to businesses that you would normally find immediately out and it's usually a mixture. And this is more like a traditional neighborhood. When you get out on a bona fide highway district, such as the western side of town when you're heading out in the area of Reeves Farm, for example, yeah, you're not down there anymore. That would not be downtown support. At the same time, a great example, and please do not hit me on it, no matter what a different state, a lot of farmland gets converted. So certainly, if you're walking through the neighborhood that I live in, in the town that I live in, I can tell you with complete certainty that road crops are growing on my property 45 years ago. Better not now. Those farmers are of course now deceased and the land is long gone. There were at one time horses and stables on the property that I live on. Right now, there's now 4,500 people per square mile where I live. That was not the situation when it was formed. Unless it's an amazingly busy farm.
A good way to look at it, the future land use plan, is when you go bowling and you're taking a kid and you have a ball, they guard react very bowling. It's to really guide the path, not where you really want to go, but allow a level of flexibility within each, each road for instance, or each road. So it's not a firm guide, but it's a guide nonetheless, but it still allows for some level of flexibility because the future is indeterminate. And the architects of planning thought that would make a lot of sense to provide that level of flexibility, but yet still have an end goal and have some sort of relevance because outside of that, people just become a little bit more loose with that.
Yeah, I get it, I mean, just my last town, for example, the strategic plan would be very opaque, whatever. You would have a lot of flexibility, but then the future land use plan would use defined current district zoning. So for example, my old house was, future was medium density. Currently, you know, our, what we have is RA2 or whatever, but future use was medium density. I knew when I bought that house that that thing was going to be apartment complex all around it at some point.
Same.
So I had, perfectly, I knew upfront, that's what I'm saying, it would be, it would be, you get people who are, it'd be too hard or think for our communities, it's growing so fast apparently, but.
No, we're good at it. I think, let me, I do have an amazing team and certainly if you all don't know Eric and Brian, please familiarize yourself when we were very brief at this meeting. Let me say one thing really quickly. Probably the most intimidating thing that I found moving throughout the state, because I've lived in tech, the smallest town I've ever lived in was 7,500 people and the largest town I've ever lived in was very nearly a million. So let me say, I have lived all over the state. One of the things I was the most intimidated about, going from a town of 50,000 to a town of 200,000 to a town of more than 500,000, was I was quite worried and very intimidated about that. I didn't know where anything was and I wasn't more sure about it. What I discovered, which you should have discovered when you were living in Carrie, is that what you end up with is a bunch of little neighborhoods that end up, villages that end up holding hands and become a big town. Certainly, neighborhoods have a personality, neighborhoods have a vibe. I can certainly tell you that where I live, when you go maybe three miles north or in forest country, I do refer to the Atlantic Avenue area as the warehouse district. And certainly, when I was looking for a place to have my car washed this weekend, I was not going down into an area where there was a farmer's market to look for a car wash. So it was a little bit helpful. The other thing that I find super helpful in really large places is to go and get lost every night that you're there for the first two weeks and try to find your way back to where you live so that you'll learn that things on the way. Because when you're panicked and lost in traffic, it's not a really good way to do it. I did spend five years as a consultant, so I did drive all over the state and I did work for an engineering firm that was Charlotte-based. But I'm going to say that I did not live in Charlotte. But part of that job was an awful lot of driving. It was unusual to wake up in Asheville, get to sleep in Wilmington, and then find yourself back in Eaton the next day. So one of the values of that was being able to see all the different areas. But certainly, you can spot really good design and really good development and you can also spot really terrible development pretty quickly. Neighborhood grants are an awful lot of it. All right, well, we are going to get back together in a couple of weeks, yes?
I think you aged yourself, getting lost when you're on GPS if you're following.
Yeah, still get lost. I was actually in Asheville and I was with a group of people who were staying at the road park in. And we began to drive out and we got about a mile and a half outside of the corporate limits of Asheville. And at the exact same moment, the phone had one half of one bar and then it became no bars. So we're driving and we end up in Tennessee, which is not hard to do when you were there. And then we thought we were turning around and going the direction we thought was supposed to be going and we ended up in Virginia, not a good place to be. But let me say that the GPS is helpful. My ways is a liar and I've been lost a number of times even here.
Okay, I have a question.
Again, last question of the night.
Okay. How does the county planning, is it, is it sort of like the municipality town in Pittsburgh has its own planning and then some of the chat of the county in general can sort of supersede? Or is it, is it work together in some sort of way, layers, types of?
We try to work together. I'd say we do a fair job, but we're just in charge of our stuff. We do try to coordinate when they work on a land use plan, we do try to have representation, we do try to go to the events, and we do try to coordinate. What we're not trying to do is, you know, make ours match theirs because the needs of the town may be very different than the needs of the county as a.
But there's not, is there any like county-wide ordinance or it's like, once you hit this?
Animal control, animal control.
I mean, land, land use.
Soil erosion, stormwater, but it none there.
Okay, so there's no way that Chatham County could have like a land use plan for this part of town, right? Because it's Pittsburgh jurisdictional.
Right. However, we do try to coordinate.
Yeah, of course.
We don't always succeed, but we do try.
And ETJ is?
ETJ is a fun place. It's fun. No, no, they do not. Once they give us ETJ, it becomes our zoning.
But the share.
All right, well, I really appreciate it. We're going to be back in a couple of weeks on your normal meeting night. Probably there will be an additional training piece at that time. Teresa unfortunately was unable to be here tonight, so I sort of pitched in at the absolute last minute. Appreciate your time.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming there are no department updates.
No, the department update is I'm thrilled to see you all and I greet the new members with enthusiasm. Oh, and I'm sorry, you all did beat sandwich.
Yes.
It was our new shining star. These are existing shining stars. I have an amazing department and I don't want y'all to forget it.
Thank you, yeah, we appreciate all the help keeping us in line. With that, then, we will move to board comment period. Does anybody have anything that they would like to say? Any questions for the president board? All right. Great, then with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Charity.